Okay, we're ready? Okay, it is after six thirty. Our other meeting ran a little long, so I will call this meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well then we will take your roll call. Mayor Kratzky, I am present. Moko.
Present.
Groko.
Present.
Kufal.
Present.
Padia.
Present.
And Iker. And we have one change to our agenda tonight and under eleven F, we are going to schedule our next budget meeting. So we'll add that under eleven. F, under new business. I don't know if we want to put this on the agenda or not, Steve. I was going to talk to you before the meeting and council, but I had another request to hunt on city property. I know we revisited that in the past. I don't know if we want to revisit that again. It's on the land. I'm trying to think, south of the dirt pile. Our attorney says, why not?
Sorry, you got it. I was trying to...
Oh, I said, I've received another request for someone who wants to hunt on city land south of the dirt pile, the hunt geese out there. I said, I don't know if we want to revisit that. I know last time someone asked, the answer was no, due to concerns about liability.
On our pond by the compo site?
The new pond out there?
Yes.
Dorm water pond?
That's kind of close. The last request was for...
The one right out here by...
No, the one by the south side of the dirt pile.
So, the compo site?
The compo site.
The new pond.
Yeah, right out by the new road.
Yeah, by Shoreview Lane. That's real close.
The DNR won't even let us shoot excess geese out here inside city limits, right? Discharge of firearms.
Now you're going to have them buildings going up there too.
That's inside of city limits. I wouldn't do that at all.
No, I said I would ask the question, but I let the person know that last time someone asked it was, it was no.
That's, that's, too many people go off to the compo site. And we're going to have buildings going up out there on Shoreview Lane now?
Because we annexed that when we, right?
Yeah, that's in the city.
Nope, I just wanted to say I asked, so thank you all. And we're not going to worry about that. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, then we'll take a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, August sixteenth. We have a motion by Iker, seconded by Kufal. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Okay, any updates from citizens? Nope, we don't have any here tonight. Any updates, comments, concerns from council members?
I just got a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
The new homes there behind Napa there, that dirt pile that's there, is that still on city land? And I thought we gave them a timeframe to get rid of that.
Yes, your recollection is correct. We actually gave them last year until the end of October to move that out of there. He sent me an email before the end of the year saying that their, whoever was going to move it didn't work out. And so, it was December at that point. Sent him an email a couple of months ago and I have not heard back from him when he was going to move it. So...
So once again, we work with him to give him the opportunity and then they...
I'll, I'll follow up again with him now that you, especially since you brought it up.
And since Scott brought it up, you know, on the same, part of the same email, maybe we could inquire, is there any interest? You know, the bigger part, it's city property where that dirt pile is sitting. I'd like it to be his property.
Yeah.
You know, is there any interest to work together?
Be a good approach. I like that. Okay.
And then just one other thing, and it might come up because I had mentioned this to Steve, it's just a question on the seal coating that I talked about, Steve, are you going to tie here yet?
If you want to, if you want to...
So, when they did A Street here, when they seal coated it, I noticed, and you probably did the chat too, and I noticed it just because I live at that intersection of Main and Eighth. When, two years ago, when they did the, redid the street, put down the new asphalt, so when they came up A Street, they went around the corners on Main, probably twenty feet or something into Main Street. Well, now when they seal coated, they didn't do that, they just went straight through. So you got a twenty-foot section, and I drove A Street, and there's a few other intersections where they did that, too. Or off A Street, they went into the adjoining street there, but that's never been seal coated. So now like on Main Street, coming all the way down the hill is seal coated, there's like a twenty-foot section that isn't, and then A Street is seal coated, and then there's another section that isn't. And to me, that's not right. I mean, that's new asphalt there, and that should have been seal coated. And so my question is, why now isn't done?
And I did ask Ty about it, and he went out and confirmed exactly what you said. And then he looked back at his specification for the job, and he didn't have it mapped out like that. He had it just going straight. And so, it's going to have to get picked up next year. So that's what he, that's what he's proposing to do, is pick it up next year.
And then ease of operation, too. You know, if you see him, how they lay that down?
Well, I know.
You know, but he's right, if we didn't have it, then the contractor...
Right, if it wasn't in there, I get that. And that's most my question is, why it wasn't done? Because I got, to me, that needs to be done. We don't just leave it...
It's, it was a good catch, because I don't think Ty caught it.
Yeah, oh, good catch, for sure, Scott.
Anything else from council members?
I'd just make a note that everybody I talked to thought egg days went very well. Everybody had fun, lots of activities, three bands over three nights. I mean, all good stuff, from the kickball tournaments, to the parade, to the fireworks. Everybody, I didn't hear anything about it, honestly.
Oh, the band Saturday night was incredible.
Yeah, they were good.
So good. Never heard of them before, but they were great. So yes, the committee did a great job.
Big debate about the burgers.
We're not talking about that anymore. Okay, anything else? Thanks Chad for that update. Okay, then we'll move on to city staff. Any comments, updates, concerns? No? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda and take a motion to approve it. Motion by Iker. We have a seconded by Kufal. Any comments or discussions about the consent agenda? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. We'll come back to our public hearing at seven PM. There's a couple of things on here for communication requests and petitions from Bayside Manor and the Sibley County Backpack Community Fair. Moving on to department and committee act, reports and action items. Looks like we can skip down to police department. And is Chief Ickton here? Yep, I thought I saw him back there.
I think, I think we're probably going to have to wait on the body cam stuff till after the public hearing, but we could do the surplus property.
Yep. Okay, then we'll go to ninety-three to declare surplus property.
Evening, everyone. This is in regards to some surplus property. We have a couple of shotguns that are able to be, or that were forfeited, that are now able to be sold. We had a traffic stop back at the end of December, right before New Year's. Driver was arrested for DUI felony narcotics. He was in possession of two shotguns during this time. Since then, both have been forfeited. Everything is done with court, which I attached the, the order there, and we are able to sell both of those shotguns as surplus property, which then, in the City of Gielor, we get seventy percent and whatnot as it's, as it's laid out there. So, just pretty much looking for permission to sell the two shotguns that we have in our evidence room that we forfeited in December.
How does that work, Charlie? It's got to be a licensed firearm dealer.
I figured we would either bring it to Almonds down in Morristown or the one up in Hutchinson.
I didn't know if there's a place you could put it for them to see if you got to seek out someone.
Yeah, I think we got to go to probably one of those two places would make the most sense.
There's no further questions. We just need a motion to sell surplus property consisting of two shotguns to a federally licensed firearm dealer.
I'll make that motion.
Who wants to claim that one? Doesn't matter. Motion by Iker, seconded by Groko.
I have a, just something I wanted to bring up in relation to this. Pardon me for not knowing, but, and I don't know if there's been a history on this. Is there a dollar amount that you want every piece of surplus property that we come across or we believe should be surplus to bring in front of you? Or should there be a dollar amount, or has there been a dollar amount, that if we think it's going to be less than such, whatever that dollar amount is, that we don't have to necessarily bring it to you for approval before we sell it? Or do you want everything to come in front of you?
I'm fine with a dollar amount, like, your authority is up to five thousand dollars or whatever we have that way.
Yeah.
But I thought, I thought to declare public property surplus, I thought that, didn't that have, doesn't that have to be a motion? Or a...
I have to look at the statute.
There's something kind of tricky about that.
So I guess the, what Steve is proposing is, is absent something requiring mandatory approval, is there a certain threshold of value that council essentially doesn't really want to be bothered with approvals? So I don't know off the top of my head if that's permissible, but theoretically, if we don't have to go to council for everything, kind of where do you guys envision that line?
Be fine with the same amount we authorize them to spend up to, I guess.
I don't know if I'd want to go that, quite that high, my personal feeling.
Okay.
But Charlie, you're not coming to us with forfeited vehicles.
Um, trying to, trying to remember, trying to remember now.
I thought there was a Mercedes or something that was all beat up.
Yeah, we forfeited, yeah, yeah, I don't bring those to you, numerous cars over the years.
Forfeit, forfeit is different than surplus.
I think, yeah.
Well, these are forfeited, too. So this is... I, I guess it was my, I suggested that we bring this to you guys, in part, because I wasn't sure, and then, so I wanted to ask this question, because, you know, these shotguns aren't going to be that valuable.
I mean, the money's coming back. All that, so the forfeited money goes into the police fund, to this, whatever attorney's prosecuting it, whether it's the county attorney or the city attorney. So the police department gets that forfeited money, seventy percent of that, and then, if it's a DWI, then the city or county attorney will get the remaining thirty. So that's like a marked count for the PD. So, I don't know why this city would want to be too wrapped up in that.
I think it's different city property versus forfeited property.
I think to forfeited property, do what you need to do with it.
Yeah, because he could use, now if he wants to use that money, say he wants to buy something big with that money, he's going to have to come to the council and request to spend that money, you know? Say he gets, we had like ten thousand dollars in our home, I had to go before council to buy this old Explorer. So he's going to have to do the same. He's going to have to bring it to the council to spend that money. And we can see it on the line items for the budget. If you look at it, you'll see the forfeiture money account.
It's just good that the, the government gets their cut, just like the mob.
Of course.
Sibley County gets their twenty percent, and then the state treasury gets their ten percent.
Yeah, and then the state also audits, audits him on that money every year. He has to report to the state.
I have a little laugh.
I've seen some cities that they'd have a policy in place, say if we have a hundred dollar item, for example, you don't have to bring it to the council, to go ahead and sell it. Some cities that even go as far as to have policies as far as what city staff can buy or, you know, how that works. Can they bid on it just like anybody else?
I, I think if it's forfeited property, you get rid of it, and maybe talk about like, if it's actually surplus city property that we're selling, like we just did with them...
Looper tubes?
And stuff, then, over a certain amount, bring it to us maybe, but under a certain amount, I, I don't know.
It's, it's a difference, I think, too, like, if, if the police department's trying to sell one of their Explorers, which is owned by the city, that's different money than a forfeited vehicle, which they stopped on a DWI or something. Because the, the truck the city bought, they should get the money. There are...
So the consensus is forfeited property, don't have to come here?
Yeah, I was looking at the statute here, and it looks like most of this is kind of just spelled out statutorily, so, absent, it doesn't look like the city needs to approve. At least in this context, we wouldn't need to approve the sale of this stuff. Again, there's another component of, how do we spend this money, which may require separate approval, but I believe Tony's right in what he's saying.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, well then I think we have consensus on that. We do have a motion on the table. Should we still go ahead and vote on it? Just kind of ceremonial at this point? Or do we not need to continue with our motion?
Well, since you come this far, you can just...
Okay. So then all in favor...
There's no harm in voting on it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll come back to you after our public hearing. Next, moving on to the agenda, we can start with, I just want to see what all ties into, I think we can do eleven B on, under new business, if that doesn't interfere with our hearing.
Okay, if you had a chance to read my request for council action here, the current renter of our three farm, or three parcels that we lease out for farming purposes, he is currently under a three-year agreement, and that agreement ends here on November first of this year. He has submitted me a, an email with a proposal that to extend the three-year agreements another three years with the increase in the rent of five percent. In the past, we've, we have gone out for bids on those things, but in light of, he has been a good farmer for us, he's taken care of the land really well, and so I'm just bringing it up for your consideration and direction here as far as what you'd like to do. So I included the, the three parcels and what he's currently paying us for those, to rent those lands and farm them.
I'm in favor extending it, but how about that waste water treatment ponds? If you were looking at possibly selling that...
Yeah.
Then that isn't available to rent.
Right, we'll, we would, as I point out here, we'll have to adjust that, that acreage for that particular farm lease agreement, minus that, starting with next year. He may reach a similar agreement with Walbaum to continue to farm that, but it won't be our land anymore.
That ain't the one though, is it? You got the waste water treatment ponds, forty-two tubable acres.
Yeah, it's the industrial park area.
Oh.
It's that parcel.
That's going to Walbaum's.
Correct.
But I'm talking about the first one, they got waste water treatment ponds.
Oh, if we sell it.
If we would sell that.
Pardon me, I'm thinking of something else.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be on the list anymore, right? And if, if you guys are looking at doing that, I'd have to bring it up to him and see if he'd still be interested in what he's proposing then, too. Maybe he thought about making that proposal, knowing that he was going to get all three again. Because that's a pretty big one there. It's the biggest one.
And I'm not all that much in favor of selling that land out there, but... I don't know anybody else's thoughts there.
When does he need to know?
Well, I would say he's going to need to know here probably, you tell me, September?
Fall application.
Yeah, he's going to have to do a fall application after he harvests what's there. So I would say in the next month here, probably, to be fair. And then if, if, let's just say for sake of discussion, that we have to go off for bids, we're going to want a little time to be able to do all that, too.
I don't think we need to go for bids, but, I mean, as far as that property, we haven't identified any public use for it, so I mean, I'm fine with selling it to help buy down our project debt for next year, but that's my two cents.
Last year, when we, when he, when we were doing Willard's property, we had, we were farming that to him, too. We set up a separate agreement on that, and then he did a fall application. Well, now we've sold the property, we gave him a credit for that fall application on the land that he wasn't able to farm, like where the pond is, for example, and all that.
So how will we do this? You know?
I'd want to talk to him about it in advance, make sure he's...
So, well, can you talk to him then and just bring it back then? Is that the...
I think I can bring it back next meeting, just to see where he's at. I mean...
If it's possible, it could just be that school addition, that twenty-seven acres out. Would be the only thing he'd be renting from us.
Would it do any good to approve this and come back with any amended changes, that he knows that he has our support to at least rent it, or, or not?
Tonight, you're just looking for consensus. I mean, I think...
All I'm looking for is a consensus.
The council's consensus is to approve it, but to make sure he's aware of, you know, things going on over there, so...
Are you?
That works.
Yep.
Okay, because we would want to bring back the, the lease agreement itself for you to approve.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Eleven C, do you want to go ahead with, or should we?
Yep, we can go.
Okay. We've got the Mueller Business Ventures license application for sale of edible products infused with THC.
Their application is in your packet. They have successfully, the background investigation has been successfully completed. Everything looks good, they paid the fees. We actually did a, in this particular one, we did an investigation on the owner as well as the manager of the store. So they agreed to that. So I guess our recommendation here is that to approve the, the application. I'm open for any questions, and Charlie's here too, he, they did the, the investigation.
No questions, we just need a motion to approve the license application for Miller Business Ventures DBA Marathon for the Sale of Products Infused with THC.
So moved.
Motion by Padia, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Groko. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Next, eleven D, we have the Oaks Pavilion Project Pay Request, number four.
Maybe we could come back. That one might take a little bit.
Okay, that one might take a little.
Five minutes. We could do the last two items.
Okay, so eleven E, scheduled public hearing to oppose a moratorium, moratorium on operation of cannabis businesses.
At the last council meeting, you actually had set this hearing. Unfortunately, by law, we have to advertise ten days in a newspaper, and we didn't have time to do that. And so, propose here is to reschedule that hearing to September sixth at seven o'clock. So in, in your packet then is a sample of the ordinance that will be proposed, or, this will be the ordinance that'll be proposed at the hearing.
Okay, so we need a motion to move, so schedule the public hearing at seven PM on September sixth.
We could, we could say we're rescheduling it in the motion.
Rescheduling it? Okay, so we need a motion to reschedule the public hearing to September sixth, 2023, at seven o'clock PM, for the purpose of considering an ordinance authorizing the study of imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis business in the city.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion by Kufal, seconded by Padia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. We have a few more minutes, so we'll move on to eleven F, where the, we want to schedule a continued budget discussion, special work session for September sixth at five-thirty PM.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Moko, seconded by Iker. Any further discussion or comments? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Okay, it's just about seven, so wait on everything else after our public hearings. My clock there says seven, my computer says six fifty-six.
Do you want to get through the pay estimate quick, Steve?
I can start it. If we have to, we can come back to it.
Sure, yeah, we have three minutes, so let's...
Okay, so this is pay request number four for the Oaks Pavilion Rehabilitation Project. There was, this has been approved by our architect. There was one addition, as I point out in the request for council action sheet, in reference to the roof, we did do some changes, and these changes were actually in regard to the actual architectural plan. Some of you may have seen it, if not all of you, the original, when it was framed up the first time. It wasn't all, I'm talking about the north end now, this is the addition where the new kitchen is being added there. Originally, there was two valleys in the old roof. The south valley was remaining, and then the north one, they were indenting from that a few feet. So you might have seen that framed up. And then there was a lot of questions about how that's going to look. And ultimately, from a, from a, first of all, from a building permit standpoint, it would have passed. Our architect was okay with it as well, but just how it looked, it looked awkward. And so, a new concept or option was created to do what's out there right now. And that's basically eliminated that north valley, and then just extended that new roof all the way to the, to the edge of the building. And it's all framed up, it's shingled, everything's done with that. The only thing that's remaining is at the top where there's a new flat piece there, that has to be completed yet, but otherwise, everything's done. I think part of the goal in talking with Chuck and Dale was that they were trying to not create another flat roof at the top, and so they were trying to figure out a way that they could not do that. And it just, it did look a little awkward, because it was a little bent in, too. It just wasn't a straight. So, a, a number of people, Scott, sitting next to me, was one of them that questioned that quite a bit. So, again, again, that's done. This was, again, our architect changed this, or had it designed the way, to some degree the way it was done. It wasn't done exactly, because of a discussion that was held between Chuck, Dale, and the contractor to do that first, first option, and then that got changed. So the contractor basically followed what, either what the plan was, or what was the agreement with Chuck and Dale. He did incur some extra time and the materials there. I don't know if he charges for everything, but twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred hours is what he's basically requesting here, for the additional time and work that he put into extending that roof as it is right now.
So who like, who approved the, the change then? Chuck and Don?
The first time around?
Well, the change to what it is now that we're paying the twenty-eight hundred...
I, I was involved in that, with one of our staff people I conversed with, and then also our building inspector.
So does, does anybody that, like, designed it, does, does he have any, does he have a dog in this?
It, that... We, we did converse with our architect on this, too. First, we came up with the concept, and then we talked to her. She drafted it, sent it off to our contractor.
Yeah, it's, it's seven o'clock, can we just take a break? Do our public hearings and come back?
Sure.
Okay. So do we just need to recess the...
Just open the public hearing.
Okay, open the public hearing. Okay, so I will open the public hearing now. We have two public hearings tonight at seven PM. The first is seven A on the agenda, ordinance number three fifty-eight, an ordinance amending the nuisance parking and storage in inoperable motor vehicle sections of the city code.
Okay, at the July nineteenth city council meeting, you had reviewed a draft ordinance at that time and had some discussion on this, and then you went ahead and set the public hearing for this evening. The main, I think, purpose of this ordinance was to establish definitions for what a vehicle is and what a recreational vehicle. There was some additional discussion went into dumpsters as well, and that kind of got resolved at the last meeting, but that's also in this, in this proposed ordinance. So we, there are definitions here for a vehicle, a motor vehicle, and a recreational vehicle. I'm not going to read all that, but it's there for your consideration. And again, we did go over this draft at the last, at that July meeting, and you had concurred or consented at that time. Other, other changes here then, things that we need to have a discussion about, and you had agreed that you'd like to have the hearing before you try to attempt to make a decision on what, such as a number of recreational vehicles that can be parked on a property at a given time. You were hoping to get some public feedback or input on that. Also, on the campers, we currently don't identify how many campers or RVs a residential property can have. We have several in town that have one, and we have a couple were sold that have two. We've actually received a complaint about that, of a part, of a property that has two from a neighboring property, that they were not happy that they had two of them, mainly neighboring property, that they were not happy that they had two of them, mainly because of their sight line in their backyard. They couldn't see. The dumpsters, just as a refresher, you had agreed on a, a party could put a dumpster on their property, and you wanted to have a set timeframe, and you had said sixty days at the last meeting. I also, we had a discussion about putting it on a city street, and I, based on that conversation that was held at that meeting, I put this language in here that anybody wishing to put it on a dumpster on a city's street has to get the permission of the city prior to doing so. There may be circumstances that we just might, they may not have any other options. And versus just simply saying no completely. I thought we'd put that in there, but again, this is for your consideration.
Would there be a time limit on that though, or not sixty days sitting on the street, is it?
That's a good point, and that's something that should be, I think, addressed. Generally, when I've done that, I have set a time period, and I try to work with the property owner, whether it's seven days or fourteen days, but something reasonable. Did we? Did I miss that?
It was like two weeks.
Yeah, it was no more than two weeks.
Okay.
Then we were gonna have the, the delivery company notify us when they get set on the street.
When I think that somehow already if, I think we need to know that so the PD can go down there if they're sitting there more than two weeks, so they know which ones are, are there.
Right.
That are sitting there longer than they should be.
I think that's what you guys talked about. Okay. Sorry, man, I missed that. One thing, if I may, like to add in here too, is up on item B, of that second, I'm sorry, on page forty-five, close to the top, this would be three B. We state there that no motor vehicle, I think we should add in there, no motor vehicle or recreational vehicle basically shall be parked on the front, back or side lawns in residential area. So basically, they have to have a gravel surface. That's part of this too. So they can't be parked on the grass, in other words. They have to have a gravel surface or a hard surface, some sort of hard surface, whether it's the driveway or another area.
Does packed dirt qualify? That's what a lot of people are doing. They're just parking on the grass and producing the grass is dead and it's just packed, white dirt, and that's where they sit.
Says gravel parking surface. Gravelled, that's what it states here.
A lot of them aren't. They just, like I said, their, the grass dies, they got dirt there and it gets packed in from being on there all the time. That's what we got.
And I am, I don't know. It, it, every city's a little bit different. I mean, if that's a significant thing for the city here that it has to be gravel versus just letting them park arbitrarily on the grass.
Well, the problem with that and what I've seen in other cities when people are parking on grass is weed and grass is growing up. With underneath, and it, it just creates an eyesore and place for critters to hide.
You're talking like if they're, if it stays there for a period of time?
Yes.
I'm talking like people that use your vehicle daily that just pull into the yard there in the front yard or wherever it may be, and then it, they're out constantly day in and day out, and then it kills the grass, and now you just got dirt there, and that's the way it stays.
Yeah, I think, I thought it was an improved surface like gravel, asphalt or cement. Dirt wasn't bad there. You can park on the street. You don't have that ordinance anymore that you can't park on there during the winter from two to six or whatever, so.
I, I did get one letter, and I'd like to read if I could. It's, it's short. It's addressed to me. This is from, his name is Dwayne Slater. He actually has two RVs. He was not able to be here. He's out of town. He just states here, "Just a short note to put in writing the issue we discussed on August seventh. Two to three years ago, when the city was enforcing the no parking on unimproved property, I spent fifteen hundred hours to have sod and dirt removed in my lot and back, and back, and sand and gravel and crushed rock put in. Since then, I park my five whee, fifth wheel and motor home there in the summer. Take my motor home to Arizona during the winter. With the fixed income, I can't afford to store one or both at one hundred dollars per month each. Thank you, Dwayne Slater."
Is that one the property that we've had to complain to him?
So he's, he was, he's in compliance. He's doing what the city asked, and we never had anything as far as limitation on campers before. So he's just asking that he be able to continue that. That's the only, I guess that's the things I wanted to bring up as far as the ordinance changes are concerned. And so if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to try to address them.
Is there a, I guess I remember, was there any like setback requirements as far as proper lines, how close it can be? Like in his case.
Okay, I found this on the web for remember. Is there any links?
In his case, if, where his campers are, could he build a garage there?
He'd have to meet our setbacks.
We're right, that's why I'm asking, because then if he could legally build a garage there, well, then that's gonna block the sight line too. And I get it, you know, people want to be able to see out and stuff, but I'm just thinking if he's in compliance there that he could put a shed there for a garage, then is he okay with that?
I'm thinking in his case, he, he would probably need a variance to be able to do so. I don't know if he'd want to build it.
No, I'm not saying he has to, but I'm just saying that as an example, that if he would put a garage there instead of the RV and motor home sitting there, then that view isn't there either. Yeah, I'm just saying that, yeah, it might be blocking the view, but it could be a garage sitting there, and then the view is blocked too, so. I get it. I know people want to look out their window and be able to see and maybe not stare at the motor home all the time, but I don't know.
It happens though. I mean, even if they park it in their driveway, you could have two properties that are close together, and you look out your kitchen window, and right there it is.
Right.
Yeah, it's just like, where do you draw that line though, you know? Do you, it's hard to, I mean, you got a mobile home, an RV, you know, I mean, that's, you have a lot of stuff. So where, where do you draw that, that line as to, what do you want to look at? What's excessive? And, and I get that he has both, but as a neighbor, where do you want to draw that line?
I think if we're eliminating, limiting it to two, I mean, there's all kinds of scenarios that can come up that we're never going to be able to cover everything. So we just have to try to do the best we can and say if you can have two, and you meet those guidelines, that it's on those surfaces that we're asking for, I, I think that's the best we can do.
I know people have campers and fish houses, which fish houses can be used as campers, you know, so that's, I, I agree with what you said. If, if they have two and they're storing them properly, we have to find a way to be okay with that.
That's it, two.
Still a public hearing?
Yes, it is a public hearing. Any further discussion or questions? There's no one here for public comment unless. Or Charlie, I want to respond as citizens.
I mean, I have a couple thoughts, I guess. I guess I'll share what you have shared before. And I know there's time restraint and whatnot, but my two big things that I, that I thought of, which I've shared before is, the way the ordinance is currently written is it says no motor vehicle regardless of condition shall be parked on front, back or side lawns in residential areas. Vehicles that are parked or stored outside must be on a paved or gravelled parking service or driveway area. So my question is, okay, does that mean nobody can park a vehicle in their front, back or side yards? Or can they, if they rip up their grass and throw down gravel regardless of whether it's front, side or back, because that's what everybody's doing now? Whether the council wants them to do that or not, I guess that's their loophole they're getting around is, I'm putting down crushed rock, I can park my car in my yard now. Well, that's all well and dandy unless they're, you know, on a corner lot or a property line and it's right in somebody's backyard, now they have to look at a vehicle all day long because somebody's parking their car in their backyard. So I guess the question is, is, is that something we want to continue to allow? Anybody can park any number of vehicles in their backyard, side yard as long as they put down gravel? Or is it meant to be that they shouldn't be parking in their backyards?
Definitely not the front.
Are they parked, parking vehicles they're using every day? Are they just parking old vehicles or just stuff that's sitting there?
Good question, Scott. I, if I had a gander, I guess I would say probably some or both. Like, you know, some people are probably moving it every day and some people are just, you know, parking it there, so.
We already limit the numbers to four, no more than four vehicles per lawful dwelling unit. But yeah, that's exactly what the, the new stuff or the, the improved surface. I mean, front, back or side yard lawns in residential areas to me is just, yeah, you can't park in your grass unless the next one, you park it on an improved surface. That's the way I think it is.
Sure, so you can rip up your grass, put down gravel, then you're good to go.
Even in the front?
Well, because I think that some people don't have much of a backyard or they don't, you know what I mean? So they have to put it in their front.
And I've seen really nice in front yard where they have a single stall garage, and they just do a curved gravel pad off to the side because of, they only have a single stall garage.
And I think the.
And that's done well.
Whole goal of this is for it to look nice and not be junk in an eyesore. And I think that's the whole goal of it. So like you said, yeah, if they've done it nice and people don't complain and it looks good, is the problem though?
I mean, we have a lot of homes in Galer with narrow lots and a single stall garage. So they don't have a lot of options, but as long as it's done well. But if someone's tearing up the middle of their yard and just parking four vehicles there, I mean, I, I mean, maybe we need to define some parameters. What's, I think it's different if they're parking off their driveway or parking off their alley versus.
Right in the middle of their front yard or something where, oh, I need, I need a room mirror, so I'm just gonna put a gravel pad here in my middle of my front yard and other.
And I'm gonna park three of my four vehicles here in my front yard.
I don't agree with that.
You know, when you start micromanaging those types of situations, though, it's, you don't want to, you don't want to get into that.
A yard full of cars, like.
Right. I think that the number's good. Again, people are so restricted by, if somebody has a small front yard, they can't park there. So they have to park in the back and situations that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I get it. I just want to make sure that we're doing what you guys want us to be doing, so. Enforcing what your vision is of what the city should look like, so.
You're still working hard on ordinance, is that?
It's a never-ending battle, year round. And the last thing, and maybe I shouldn't even bring it up, but I will, is, is just back to the recreational vehicle things. Do we want people parking their snowmobiles in their yard during the middle of the summer? Or should it have to be in season for recreational vehicles? Those were the two things I had, so.
One challenge, fish houses, you mentioned it, they use them year round now. So that could be, you know, one of the challenges. Snowmobile, obviously, that's very winter. Fish houses would maybe have to be an exception potentially because they could say, well, I'm using it. I might only use it once in the warm weather months, but I'm using it.
Yeah.
Charlie sees snowmobiles on people's yards?
I must have at some point over the years, otherwise I wouldn't have wrote it down on my thing, then we started working on this pre-COVID, so.
I mean, I just don't know if it's that big of a problem, you know? I mean, again, there's so many things. If one person's doing it, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of.
I mean, I, I, if it's in the backyard, you're kind of not so obvious, but yeah, I want a snowmobile sitting in the front yard all summer long.
I actually, I actually come to think of it, I, I do remember where it was. It was on the corner of Lincoln and Seventh there. It was kind of a side yard, side lot, house, whatever you want to call it. He ripped up the whole yard which faced Sixth Street and yeah, put a bunch of snowmobiles there. And you could see him driving up and down Sixth Street. He no longer lives there. He moved, but that's where the, the main problem was there. So we had a lot of complaints on that yard. So I guess, I guess the problem's solved.
Well, for the time being, till the next one he says to do it.
That's all I have for that, my two thoughts.
Thank you for sharing your, your input. Okay, if there's no further comments, I guess we'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Someone?
Motion by Eker.
Second.
Seconded by Padilla. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Public, oh, hearing is closed. Yes, I'm, I was confused. I was thinking we need to, the second one first. Okay, any further discussion on the proposed ordinance?
Colin, we, we need to go to the next hearing.
Okay.
We'll come back to this one on, under new business.
Sounds good. So next, I will call or open the public, the second public hearing on the use of body worn cameras policy. Are you gonna present on that, Charlie? Steve?
Charlie, I'll come on.
Okay.
I guess I'll just kind of read what we got written here. At the July nineteenth regular city council meeting, the council scheduled the public hearing for the purpose of taking public input on body worn cameras slash body worn cameras policy. State statute requires that we hold a public meeting prior to getting body cameras, implementing them and prior to implementing a, a body worn camera policy. I guess that's the goal of tonight is to have a public hearing for any citizens that want to comment on, you know, what they feel should be their input on a policy or body worn cameras. However, it doesn't look like anybody showed up for that, so. Otherwise, basically what I did was, a lot of times the post board will have a, a model policy. Hard to believe they don't have a model policy for body worn cameras, which is insane to me. Fortunately, the League of Minnesota Cities put together a model policy for body worn cameras incorporating all the elements of the state statute and state statute. And I pretty much went through that with a fine-toothed comb and compared it to a few other neighboring agencies' policy and came up with the one you have in front of you tonight, so. I think for the most part, it's pretty straightforward. There's a few parts going through there from the leagues where you could pick option A or option B, and I compared it to the other cities and I guess added my own personal thoughts and input on it and, and kind of matched what all the other cities are, are selecting, so.
Do some of these requirements fall like under state statute too?
Yes. A lot, a lot of it does.
Reading through this as far as what has to be made available to the public and things like that. Thought that was kind of interesting. The part in here too about where you have to basically converse with the officers to at least once a month, make sure that they're operating their.
Right.
Cameras correctly and so forth.
Yeah.
And also that, just like all the other equipment when they come on duty, that they have to check it to make sure it's working on, you know, it's operating.
Right. All kinds of little fun nuances.
And then the record, you know, just the, you know, you have to, every time you use it, you have to put that in your reports too.
Yeah.
Quite involved. And, and the retention on some of this stuff, if you have to retain those videos, depending on what they are.
And now, no offense, Jessica, but now you know why we waited so long to, to do this, because it's such a massive undertaking and pain, but it'll be a good thing.
Yeah, it's just, there's definitely some things involved. I, I agree. They, the advantage is certainly outweigh the work that you'll have to put in, but.
But it's definitely time. I mean, it's definitely time. It's just, yeah, a lot of work and a lot of little rules you have to follow. I won't be reading this thing every day.
Any questions the council or staff has for regarding the policy?
I wonder does Glencoe have cameras, body worn cameras? Is this similar to what you have there?
Yeah, some of the things that he's talking about, the retention policy is just like what you have for retention right now, you know, traffic stops. I mean, none of that stuff has really changed. As far as some of the stuff that you have in here, we don't do. We don't check our cameras every day. Check, 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 check. We don't. We don't do that, so, I don't know if that's a league thing, but-
Yeah, that's the league thing.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that. Um, sometimes, uh, if you work a long shift, the camera won't work. It dies on us, so, we'll put that in our, our report if the, the body camera doesn't work. We'll put, you know, body camera die during the course of the, the investigation, but yeah, any recording device that you have on, you always make note of that in your report anyways, even with the old, um, watch guard cameras that they had, you know, you'd always put watch guard video attached to the port, so, I mean, it's, it's nothing new, it's not really that big of a change, and it's, the benefit definitely outweighs the, you know, the little negative things that you have to do. There is an audit along with this as well that Charlie's gonna have to go through, but that's every couple of years and it's not a big deal either, it's painless, so, it'll be all right.
Like anything, once you get used to it, right?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
That's part of the post board audit?
No, it's the body, the body cam audit. It's, uh, it's required, well, yeah, it's required by the state and the results go to the state.
So it's not, who conducts it?
Well, whoever you, whoever you hire to do it. If you can do it internally, but he, he doesn't have the personnel to do that, we didn't have the personnel. So we paid some gal out of Burnsville to do it. She charges like a thousand dollars, you know? But she takes care of everything, she sends the final reports up to the state. Her, you know, requirements, she's, she's, she takes care of everything for you. You don't have to worry about anything. Biggest thing is just making sure everything's getting logged every day, everything gets labeled, so.
Can't wait.
You'll be fine, Charlie.
Okay. Um, as Chief Ickton mentioned, there's no public here to comment, um, so at this point, we'll look for a motion to close the public hearing regarding body cameras unless there's anything else. Motion by Iker.
Second.
Seconded by Padilla, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Uh, the hearing is closed. Thank you again, Charlie.
You're welcome.
So now, actually, we can con- Yeah, stay up here. Do, yeah, we'll just move on to nine D to the police department since we're on the topic, and nine D one is the body worn cameras policy. As soon as you're ready.
Uh, yeah, so the, uh, yeah, nine D one is the body worn camera policy, um, which we just obviously had the public hearing on. Um, I guess just looking, same thing we just looked at, to implement that as the Gaylord Police Department's, um, policy on body worn cameras.
Okay, so we need a motion to adopt the use of body worn cameras policy, so.
Second.
Motion by Iker, seconded by Padilla, any further discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion carried. Moving on to nine D two, we're, um, on body worn cameras quote.
Yes, so now that we have a, uh, official policy in place, um, it's time to review the quotes and, and select the company to go with to provide us with our body cameras. Uh, something I spent quite a bit of time on, um, spoke with three different companies, the two major ones, WatchGuard and Axon, and then the, the lesser-known company, uh, LensLock. Talked to each one of them, uh, as you can see, the LensLock price came in about half the price of what Axon did and about ten thousand dollars less than WatchGuard. Uh, being that it's, you know, a lot cheaper, I reached out to numerous sheriffs and chiefs of police around the United States. I think I spoke with at least a dozen of them that have LensLock and asked them what they thought of it. Uh, every single chief sheriff, captain I spoke to had nothing but positive things to say about LensLock. Uh, they've compared it, they said, we used to have Axon, or we used to have WatchGuard. Uh, we didn't like this about these companies, we, we thought we'd give, you know, LensLock a try 'cause it was so much cheaper, we thought it was too good to be true, but everything they've promised us, they've held up. Uh, they're into the bargain, uh, they have great customer service, they're, you know, basically cater to the smaller agencies. And not, not one person I talked to had anything negative to say about LensLock. So I, I feel, I feel I vetted this company fairly well, and I'm comfortable, um, make, if, if it was up to me, I'd, I'd be very comfortable making a decision going with LensLock. Um, you know, Axon's a very good company, uh, you know, but with, with the price being twice of what it is, um, and customer service from complaints I've heard from, you know, the sheriffs and chiefs I've talked to. I, I just, I think, even though it's, you know, the cheapest one, I, I think they have a quality product and I'm comfortable standing behind it if that's what the council, uh, chooses to go with. I guess that would be my recommendation.
Great to hear.
I mean, we're, we're pretty much, I mean, they're all, they all pretty much do the same thing, yeah, this company might have, you know, this a little different, or this company might have this a little different, but in the grand scheme of things, um, you know, the major components, they all pretty much do the same thing and have the same, uh, yeah, same thing, so.
How many total cameras would it be getting?
Uh, five.
What does the contract cover?
Uh, the contract is, is good for five years, um, all the companies are pretty much the same, they all have five-year contracts. Uh, with LensLock, that's kinda the one I did after, you know, researching and saw it came in so much cheaper, that's kinda where uh, I spent a lot of my time at the end focusing on them and asking them a bunch of questions. Um, but you get, uh, brand-new cameras after, I think it was two and a half years, thirty months. Uh, that's all included in the, in the quote, uh, so you're getting, you know, brand-new stuff. Uh, anything that breaks, gets replaced for free, uh, unlimited cloud storage, um, pretty much everything. Everything that you need is included in this, if any, anything breaks or gets damaged, it all gets, uh, replaced for free as well, so. It really is, uh, looks like too good of a, too good of a deal to be true, but, uh, I'm fairly, I'm very comfortable with their, with their salesman, we've used him before in the past. Uh, he used to work for WatchGuard in the past, and then he's done some radar stuff. Uh, he came out, gave us a demonstration, showed us the stuff, let us touch it, let us play with it. Um, you know, he's been calling me every, every few weeks, touching base with me, and I just feel very comfortable if we were to, to go with this company.
Sounds good, yeah.
And then, uh, let, uh, one last thing is, uh, he said he could uh, get them shipped out to us within thirty days if we selected their company, and he said we could be up and running in less than forty-five days.
Cool.
So we need a motion to select LensLock or another provider for a five-year contract at the price of, is the cons- consensus from the council to go with LensLock?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so then we need a motion to select LensLock body worn cameras for a five-year contract at a price of fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Motion by Iker, seconded by Padilla, any further discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I think now we are back on eleven D to continue our discussion about the Oaks Pavilion Project Pay Request Number Four.
Actually, could we go to eleven A first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Skipped over that one. We'll move on to eleven A, ordinance number three fifty-eight, establishing definitions for motor vehicles and recreational vehicles.
Oh, if I may, one additional thing I'd like to point out, this is on page forty-four of your packet, or I guess it's we're in the back here, so we forgot the page in the back, but, um, I'm looking at where we had it in the public hearing. Uh, on that very first page of the ordinance, uh, at the bottom, under letter B, pertains to unlawful parking and storage. This is where our current code states, says a person must not park, store, or allow the placement or storage of a ice fishing houses, skateboard ramps, playhouses, or other similar non-permanent structures outside continuously for longer than twenty-four hours in the front yard of a residential property unless more than a hundred feet, a hundred feet back from the property line. The one thing that's absent there, it doesn't mention anything about a driveway. You know, what if they were parking in a driveway, it says front yard, while generally driveways are in the front yard. Um, doesn't say anything about hard surface or anything like that, like, or some of these other sections do. So, I'm just bringing that up, um, if we wanna make an exception to they park it in a driveway, that's acceptable. We'd have to add that in there. But again, it's only twenty-four hours too, which is, I don't know why the twenty-four hours is significant, but kinda tells me that you don't want those things there.
Or do you take ice fishing houses out of there and just leave it with the other skateboard ramps, playhouses, things like that? And then put ice houses under the vehicle?
Yeah, that seems more of a recreational thing, vehicle.
Yes, yeah. I agree, if we just remove the ice houses, then the rest of that makes sense.
Yeah, those are, yeah, it does, those are structures.
Yep.
It looks like ice fishing houses is, excuse me, referenced under recreational vehicle. So that would kind of corporate, incorporate into the portions, I guess, we were talking about earlier in the public meeting.
Okay, so then we would have that change, and then also I mentioned during the hearing on the, the next page, under item three B at the top, to add in, after no motor vehicle, and add in the words, or recreational vehicle. And then we'd also be adding, pardon me, down under letter, letter F on that same page, um, about the fourteen days uh, for dumpsters on a city street. So this ordinance then would set not only the definitions, but it also sets the, the number of recreational vehicles that can be parked outside on a dwell, for a dwelling unit at a maximum of four. And then, um, campers would be limited to two.
That's correct. I need, no other changes than we, looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number three fifty-eight, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-two, sections ninety-two point two-five, nuisance parking and storage, and section ninety-two point two-seven, inoperable mo- motor vehicles with the changes that were just discussed.
So move.
Motion by Kufal.
Second.
Seconded by Padilla, any further discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion carried.
This will be considered the first reading then, so we'll bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Um, if there's nothing else on that, now we can move to the Oaks Pavilion Project Pay Request Number Four.
Okay. I was just, I was describing as best I could anyway, um, about the roof and what was done initially, and then where we ended up, how we got to today with the roof that was on there right now. And then he added in an additional twenty-eight hundred dollars for the extra work. Again, I don't think it was necessarily something he did wrong. Um, he was following what the plans were initially, and then also based on the discussions that he had with two of our HPC members. Um, they had come up with a, a design, and then he basically built it as best he could. And then that changed, and then he had to do additional work.
My concern with it is that we hired an architect, paid what, five thousand dollars for them plans, and then they get it wrong, and now we're responsible for it. That's where I have an issue.
Right, I'm not, I agree with you, that he just did what he was told, but those architects made that mistake. So where's, where's their fault in this?
There's never any. It's the consulting world, you just summed up the entire consulting world. I, I, we'll talk about it after the meeting, but I, I hear what you're saying, Scott. Um, but I also heard from Darren that he wasn't gonna sign off and approve the way it was.
Correct, he was not.
So I, I take issue with that.
It's not what he told me. He, he told me point-blank that it did meet the code.
That he wa- that it what?
That it met the code.
It met the code, but there's discretion, right?
He, his question was the cosmetics of it. That was, he was just bringing that to our attention, that this really is not gonna look that great in the end, and he just questioned whether or not this is exactly what we want. But he did state that it would pass the code.
Well, there again, the city's left holding the bag, it sounds like.
Well, he did, I did talk to Darren after, he went back and looked at it again, and he said he would not say no. After he looked at it again, so.
But how come?
Tell me two different things.
There's meeting the code, but then there's also signing off on a certificate of occupancy and other whatever else. I mean, those are two different things too, based on, I, I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't know, that's, that's what I thought I understood from him too, Scott, so.
Was that mean like he knew before he was doing it that it wasn't gonna pass, or?
Well, I think there's too many fingers in the pie there, we got two individuals on that committee that are kinda taking charge here, that I don't know that we need them in there, taking charge or they're making decis- just helping make decisions on it, which I don't think is the right thing.
I agree with that, 'cause the city's on hook for that one.
Right, and, and they're, they wanted to do it the way it was, and it, it, it looked terrible, and I heard a lot, I looked, I saw it myself, and like, what is wrong here? And I heard from a lot of other people that said the same thing. So it was noticeable, and it's like, why would they wanna sign off on that?
Right. No, this, the guy that's building this is getting caught in the middle.
Right.
So, so why, why are Chuck and Don?
Dale.
Dale, that Dale, why are they making that, why are they making those decisions?
I'm not sure, but they've been, as you know, very involved in this.
But it seems like if that's, they should, that should come back to the city, to you.
Yeah, in that particular case, I would agree, but, um, they have been, you know, they're, they have some expertise, obviously, and, um,
Who, who was down there that day, it was them two, you, builder, Darren, when it was discussed, Darren said he would sign off on it. There was, and, and the architects, there was like at least six people down there?
We, we did have one, yeah, our architect was down there, and he didn't say that, actually, it was agreed to that day that that would be okay. Architect was fine with it, Darren was fine with it, we left there. Then Darren came back a second time, like you said.
Yes, and I, I, I think the first time he was there, it was probably with all the pressure and everybody else agreeing to it, I don't know if Darren felt like, yeah, if they're all good with it, I'll be good with it. But then when he knew that, there was people not concerned, he looked again, and he said, yeah, that's not right. And I, like I said, you have, you hire an architect, that's their job to design things, and if they designed it wrong to begin with, why are we left pulling the bag on that, twenty-eight hundred dollars?
And why are we getting it after the fact, we should've gotten, we should've, you know, it's a change order, it should've been pre-approved, right? Yeah, I would've, in my eyes, I guess, I would've looked at it as a change order too, so whoever has to look at that and say that, but to say it was built wrong, I don't know that we could say that, because it, it was, it was cosmetics that was the argument, not that it was built incorrectly, correct? You know what I'm saying? Like, you could've left it that way if you would've wanted it that way. But cosmetically, we decided that that's not what was wanted. So, yeah, it still, I think, is a change order from what you originally had, so.
Yeah, and I did have a conversation with our architect about the change order. You know, I hope you can appreciate, there are times to keep a project going, and sometimes you have to make a decision on the spot. You don't have time to bring in the change order to get it approved ahead of time, so unfortunately, you have to rely on staff to make those calls sometimes. Ideally, though, you wanna bring the change order in beforehand, if you can, so that's what we try to do. Um, I agree that there should've been a change order in this particular example, though. I mean, we, if there was, maybe, I don't know if he knew exactly what it was gonna cost, or how much time it was gonna be involved. It might've been a little bit challenging, but there still could've been something that said not to exceed or something like that, maybe.
And, and I'll, and I'll give them that, because I know, talking to a few contractors that ask about it, they said, yes, it's not an easy build the way it had to be done, but that's where, to me, the architect should've had that laid out, should've been in the plans, here's what needs to be done. With technology nowadays, with three-D modeling, CAD programs and stuff, you can't tell me they couldn't have took what was there and, and figured out on the computer, well, how that needed to be built, to be done the way it is. And, and that's where I have a struggle with paying somebody five thousand dollars and then they didn't do it right, or didn't do it the way it should've been done, or looking decent.
Well, it's just like, you know, it's twenty-eight dollars here, which, I, I get it, we, you know, I'm not saying that it's your fault or any of our staff's fault, it just sucks that it's another twenty-eight hundred, 'cause that's ten thousand for this, it's five thousand for this. And, you know, they, they, the-
Well, it's just like, you know, it's twenty-eight dollars here, which, I, I get it, we, you know, I was not saying that it's your fault or any of our staff's fault, it just sucks that it's another twenty-eight hundred, 'cause that's ten thousand for this, it's five thousand for this, and, you know, they need the five thousand for that, it's just constant additional expenses with this project that we're not anticipating, you know? So there's nothing we can do?
It looks good now, it's on Saturday, it looks great. And I think it's one of those things that if we didn't change it, it would've bothered us, you know, as a city, and you, and, you know, so I'm glad it was fixed, I'm glad it was caught and addressed and... On that note, we need a motion to approve the Oaks Pavilion Rehabilitation Project Pay Request Number Four to Atrius LLC for one hundred seven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
What's that one?
What?
What was the amount again?
One oh seven, hundred and seven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars.
Nobody wants to go on?
No.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Groko.
I'll take it.
Seconded by Moko. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion carried. Okay, nothing under, under, closing comments?
I, I actually have one.
Okay.
But I know you're, you're excited to close it up, but, so, um, this is off topic, but I just wanted to bring it up. So I had a canine that worked for the city for four years, and, uh, he passed away this, this weekend, so he did a lot of, um, community work with, uh, engaging, you know, build, breaking down barriers, and, and he also did a lot of, uh, work with searches and stuff like that, so I know, um, I don't wanna offend anybody with what Webster has down there with like a, a little plaque, but I wanna do something for him, so I, I just wanted to ask if, if that would be offensive, 'cause we've only had one canine, and I don't know that we're ever gonna have another one if I, if I got something like that for Caesar and put it down in that area.
I think that'd be a neat, I think that'd be a cool thing.
Picture and stuff, or with a picture, kind of thing?
Yeah, like his little head on there.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, pretty sad day.
He was a beautiful dog.
He was cool.
Expected, or was he, I mean, was he doing what?
He's just got old, he's twelve, so.
Just eight.
He's that old, though, right?
He was a good caner, he was a cool dog.
Yeah, he always used to be at the public, um, our emergency services open houses.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for bringing that up and for your willingness to put something down there so everyone can remember him.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Iker, sec- we have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Kufal, all in favor say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.